This meeting of the Anaronda County School Board nominating commissioner will come to order. The commissioners have each received an agenda, and the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Secretary Hammond sent out the minutes today. There was some discussion via email and some corrections made to the original draft. Is there any objecting, objection to approving or adopting minutes as they are now?
Yeah. If I may, Commissioner Burton brought to my attention to be, which microphone am I supposed to be talking to? Not that anybody cares what I say, anyway. The section one, in section one, it's the first line item, parliamentary inquiries by Commissioner Burton. Directly underneath that, it should say whether the chair had the authority to determine the time and place, not whether the commissioner. So commissioner should be changed to chair. The other recommended changes in two emails earlier today have been made.
So are there any objections to adopting the minutes? Okay, seeing none, the minutes will be adopted by unanimous consent. Next item on our agenda is the chairman's announcements. On behalf of the commission, I want to thank the applicants, their supporters, and the interested public for coming to this meeting and participating in this important process. The chair especially appreciates each applicant for stepping forward and their willingness to serve our community. Candidates who may not be selected for nomination should recognize the outcome has nothing to do with them and everything to do with the very high caliber of the candidate pool that has come forward to serve. We have a really great candidate pool that we're very proud to have, and it's just the case that not necessarily everyone can be nominated. After public testimony this evening, the commission will make its decisions, and a letter listing all nominees will be sent to the governor's office and to the commissioners. The chair would like to encourage commissioners to follow the applicant's introductions and the other commissioners' questions carefully, listening for similarities to their own concerns. This way, we can move more efficiently. The way the presentation goes will be like this. Members of the public, when we have the public testimony, that'll follow the interviews, they'll come forward, and they'll have a three-minute limit, and they may be asked questions by commissioners. When the candidates come forward, they'll sit down here in this chair, and the chair will try to remember to turn on the microphone. And the order has been randomly selected using Mathematica. We have three interviews to get through tonight, and what we'll have, Janet Norman will be the first candidate interviewed, and after she's interviewed, we'll ask her to just let the next candidate, who will be Carrie Pets, know, and then Carrie Pets will come on in the room. Because what we'll have happen is the two not currently being interviewed, at least the first round, will have wait outside in the hallway area out there, and that is not so that they can't hear the interviews or something like that. It's simply, this way, Commissioner, it's simply so that if a person's asked a question that they just heard answered by another person, it can still be, feel interesting to that person. And then, once you've gone, you're, of course, welcome to stay in and listen. After the interviews, we'll have public testimony, and then the vote. When a person is being interviewed, the chairman will keep time, and at, the person will have a five-minute introduction, and at about 4:30, the chairman will start to make a gesture, and at five minutes, the chairman or his phone will make some noise to let you know that the five minutes is up. And then we'll go down the line back and forth, asking questions. Each commissioner is limited to two questions at five minutes each, although all that time need not necessarily be used. It is the current expectation of the chair that the next meeting of the SBNC will be a regular meeting later this year. This new SBNC has made tremendous improvements, an incomplete list of which was read at the March 28 hearing and can be seen in that video. We look forward to continuing to improve this process to provide Anaronda County with excellent, diverse, and representative school board members. So that concludes the chairman's announcements, and next, we're on to the interviews. So Carrie and Claudia, I left two bottles of water out there in the vestibule for you, if you don't mind waiting out in the hallway. And Janet, if you could come down to this seat, I'm going to turn off my microphone and turn on yours.
Okay, great. Don't want to shout you out here. Is that loud enough? Thank you for this opportunity. My name's Janet Norman, and I really appreciate you being here to speak with me and your commitment to finding the best candidates or the most suitable candidates for our school board. I am, the Capitol reported that I have two sons at Annapolis High. It only feels like that. I have, I have one son at Annapolis High, and then I have a 10th grade, and I have a 7th grader at Annapolis Middle School in the whole school IB program. I had the benefit of having a excellent public high school education in...
That's the whole deal, like it's in the hallway. The audience is in the hallway.
Well, that really takes away the...
I don't know. It's possible, but technically, we wanted to tell you.
Well, you're welcome to say, I mean, the whole point is to make it more, a better experience for the people who haven't gone yet, so if that's the case, you're welcome to stay in.
That's fine.
Okay, sorry.
Take the time, you need, sorry about that.
I think I've been in town here as well. Is that, yep?
Sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. So I'm thankful that I did have a great public high school experience and public school experience in suburban Rochester, New York, and a liberal arts education that helped prepare me for all the challenges that come ahead and provide the writing skills and the other communication skills that are needed for any position, such as a board position or my current position as a biologist for the U.S. government and Department of Interior, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. I've had a fabulous opportunity to learn many things in my career and work with many people from the Appalachian counties of Virginia, where I worked on a very large $1 billion dam project proposal, to the water supply project for Newport News, Virginia, and Williamsburg, Virginia, which was a 15-year project I worked on and was part of an interagency team that got the bronze medal from EPA. It was unusual that they gave that to an interagency team as opposed to an internal team, but it was kind of testament to the fact that we, with agency folks with very different mandates, were able to realize each other's different missions and still cooperate to move forward in a very joint and transparent manner as we proceeded through an environmental impact statement and a weighing of all the issues to provide water supply for Newport News and Williamsburg. I think school, school issues are very much like water supply because it's, you know, it's necessary for everyone in the entire county. It needs to be affordable, it needs to be safe and provided efficiently by governments. And I've benefited from going through those negotiations and working with large teams of people from many different perspectives and orientations, each with their own mission from their, their agency or their municipality. So I'm thankful to have that experience behind me, and I think that would serve me well on the board. I do have a science background from, from the University of Michigan, a master's of science in natural resources, and 25 years in environmental education, policy review, environmental impact review. One example of how I've used this, the Army Corps of Engineers was going to do a project on Greenberry Point, on the Naval Academy property that I had helped them write a management plan for, and they wanted to do a wetland restoration, which, in my field, is, you know, great to have more wetlands protecting our shorelines. But where they wanted to put it, I went back and did some research, and even through the maps in the early 1800s, there had never been wetlands there naturally occurring. And so I managed to convince them that this was not a suitable project, and it would be a waste of taxpayer money if we, if we went ahead with this, because it was not, not conducive to, to wetlands being able to sustain themselves there. And so it's just one example of, I think you have to be adaptable and flexible and, and look and see what the best fit is and what the best usage of very limited government funds are. That it's not just a good idea to, to put things where, where it's more difficult to maintain or not sustainable. And so I, I feel that same way about our school expenditures. I mean, we're, we're a growing county, and a lot of, a lot of students in our county depend on us to provide them safe buildings, and there's not enough resources to go around for every single need in the county. And I know our other county employees are feeling the pinch for, for being paid adequately. And so I recognize the constraints that we're all under for, for finding good solutions, and maybe that is looking at how other jurisdictions build their buildings less expensively, whether that's how we, how we co-locate or optimize our bus schedules. I think we do need to look outside the current processes. One minute? Okay, almost done. And, and see how we can do things differently. And I think that's one benefit from my experiences, that, that I do have connections with people from across the country and, and different jurisdictions to see the best practices that they have used. And I was very happy to have started the robotics program at Hillsmere Elementary because I wanted to provide our, our boys and especially our girls pathways into the careers of the future in engineering and, and show them the, the skills and persistence they need to, to thrive in those fields that have the jobs of the future. So, all right, if my time is up, I will, I will finish. Thank you.
Okay, so, I want to start this way. Commissioner Farrar, are you good to start?
Hi. Thank you.
I have no question.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a long number.
Could you have the commissioners identify who they are so you guys can have an answer?
Hi, I'm Dr. Linda Farrar, and I represent AEL, the Association of Educational Leaders, for the county.
Hi, I'm Susanna Kipke. I represent District 31, and my question is, on your list of goals that you hope to accomplish, yes?
I think we're just doing an introduction.
I'm sorry, I thought we were asking questions. And I thought we were introducing ourselves and then asking.
Let's, let's do that, that's our traditional way. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm being ambiguous. Christopher Farrar, you typically do introduce yourself at the beginning of every question. That's normally what we do. I thought we were going to go ahead and just do an introduction, but we can, we'll want to follow our normal sequence.
I did, I did that, and I have no question.
She did, she has no questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought you were... I'm, I'm doing two things at one time, I have this device here, I have an extra. Okay.
All right. My question is about your last goal, to ensure healthy schedules and school experiences for all students. Can you elaborate on that and, and just talk a little bit about what you mean by that?
Sure. I, I, one of the things that I love to do is to keep learning, and so I follow a lot of education websites and, and scientific journals and other, other studies on health and wellness. And I think there's a lot of factors that are maybe putting our kids at risk of, of obesity and sedentary lives, and, and we want to have, you know, more walkable, safe pathways to school, and we want to have schedules that are not, not damaging to, to our kids and putting them at risk for other behavior, risk behaviors and, and obesity and depression and other things. So I think our earliest start time in, in the state of Maryland is, I think, something that, that we're looking to move, like the, the county council had recommended with their unanimous vote, to move toward a later, healthier start for, for all of our students.
Thank you. That's, that's my only question. Commissioner Hammond?
Thanks for coming. I'm Kemp Hammond, I'm the District 30 representative, and I believe in one of your application pages, and by the way, also a graduate from Annapolis High School. You mentioned a, one of the things you mentioned is preventing talented teachers from leaving.
Yes.
And I'm, and I'm just curious as to whether you have specific thoughts, ideas, measures you'd like to see implemented at some point to accomplish.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm hoping that, that everybody in the room can go back and watch the October 21st Board of Ed meeting, where our teachers, you know, and parent supporters came out in droves, and they spoke for three and a half, four hours or so, just on, you know, some issues that, that were challenging them. I know firsthand that many of our teachers from Annapolis Middle or Annapolis High have, have left for other higher-paying positions. So I think it's not just, I think getting the teachers back onto their step contract track that, that they believed was, was part of the deal when they signed up. Many of our teachers with less experience, our younger teachers that we really need to modernize the system are on very, very low wages. You know, custodians at some schools make more than some of our starting teachers. So I really hope that we can, we can stop that hemorrhage and we can retain the quality of teachers that we have, because we have some phenomenal principals and phenomenal teachers that I have met and not lose them to Howard County or Washington DC or Delaware or other, other jurisdictions that are willing to snap them up while there's a teacher shortage and a looming retirement block of, of teachers that are, that are going to be leaving us soon.
Do you think there are other issues that perhaps the, the board, if you're, if you're on it, policies, other than monetary or pay, that would address the issues that teachers may have? I mean, sometimes.
Yes.
There's other issues other than pay.
Right, right, there definitely is. And I know one of our elementary principals decided not to adopt the, the IB elementary program because she thought that the burden was too much on her, on her teachers, for the, the burden of, the workload was too much, and she wanted them to focus on what they did best. So many of the teachers that night, on the October 21st night, came out and said, you know, we're a little bit overwhelmed by the alphabet soup of programs, and we want to get back to, to what we do best and not, and not burn out from various other burdens that they have.
That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go last.
Hi, I'm Amy Lee Branenburg. I am the County Executive Appointment School Board Nominee Commissioner, and actually a former school board member myself. In your application, one of the things that you mentioned is school capacity, renovation backlog, overcrowding, those are all concerns of yours. So I want to talk to you a little bit about Tyler Heights.
Yep.
And the actions of our board about a year ago or so. And I was not on the board at the time, but I remember it being a very contentious issue, and I know that you were significantly involved, and during your open remarks, you made comments about being mindful of taxpayer dollars. So we have two significant additions on nearby schools, which provide significant relief and provide space. I believe Georgetown East has 151 empty spaces or somewhere of the sorts. I know that Tyler Heights is overcrowded, there's no question about it. However, almost to the date, a year ago, the board made the decision not to redistrict. And I wanted you to speak a little bit about your position, your opinion, and what you would have done had it been on the board. Redistricting is incredibly painful, but it is incredibly important to make use of taxpayer dollars as wisely as you can.
Right. So I am the Ward 7 representative on the Annapolis Education Commission that's appointed by this, by the city council, and I served as the parent representative from Annapolis Middle School on the Tyler Heights redistricting parent advisory committee that the superintendent had, had set up to sort through many of these issues and make recommendations for the board. And we had, you know, two intensive months to dive through the data and the projections and neighborhood enrollment numbers. It was extremely difficult process, and, and many of us felt that we were somewhat hamstrung from the start, because we were only allowed to look at the four, for providing Tyler Heights capacity. We were only allowed to look at the two adjacent schools, which were Eastport Elementary and Georgetown East. And that, with Eastport Elementary already, you know, near busting at the seams, and Georgetown East having probably one of the highest levels of free and reduced meal, lunch indicators of, of low-income students and at-risk students in the whole county, that we did not have all the options we needed to provide the best decisions for Tyler Heights. We wanted to maintain the wonderful things, I know, I know the principals there and some of the amazing teachers there, and that the community really loved their principals and teachers and wanted to maintain their status as a, a walkable neighborhood school. So it was, it was a very difficult process, and, and we were, you know, disappointed that, that solutions were not able to be found based on, on the...
I'm going to push you a little here.
Sure.
Because I followed it closely.
Yeah.
And, you know, there was a significant number of solutions that were provided, I think upwards of 20, somewhere of the sorts, and the board was sent forward four, some with Kevin Jackson, some with Ms. Pakler, et cetera, et cetera.
Yep.
And it goes back to your opening statement, where you have to be cognizant of taxpayer dollars. So if we're going to spend $3 million on addition with, at Georgetown East and provide 150 extra seats, and we have an issue at Tyler Heights, and the charge was to relieve redistrict, or relieve overcapacity at Tyler Heights.
Right.
On some level, we have to be cognizant of taxpayer dollars and use our, you know, building Tyler Heights is a long-term solution. Redistricting is a short-term solution. And so it isn't the end-all, be-all, but it absolutely gives relief to a school in need.
Right.
And there's a recent study that came out of LA Unified School District, that if you can relieve overcrowding and you can relieve overcapacity significant, that it is equal to about 65 extra days of instruction. And so we have this school that's significantly overcapacity, and we have a solution, but we have a group of people who are sort of a little hesitant or don't have the, well, we want it to be walkers, or we didn't want to upset the community, or whatever it happens to be. And I think that there's some significance to that, I do, and I think that, again, rebuilding Tyler Heights is a long-term solution, but we also have to be willing to look at short-term solutions.
And, and we're hoping that the, the Monarch Contract School that is opening is, is going to help with, with some of that. The one unique thing about Tyler Heights was that many of our Spanish-speaking parents, you know, really could bond with their teacher and felt a familiarity and a comfort level of having all the materials translated into Spanish and, and working with someone that they connected with, their teachers, to, to help their students thrive. So unlike some of the, you know, my children went to Hillsmere Elementary, and has more middle-class families in it, and some low-income students that maybe are more mobile to other, other places. The Tyler Heights community really wanted to, wanted to stay with their walkable schools and the teachers that they knew and stuff. I know the, the 13 portables are in, you know, really awful condition, and it's, it's not just that the capacity needs to be increased, but that the facilities within the school need to be renovated are very old, you know, they're, they're in need, and there's, there's conditions that none of us would want to send our children to in those portables and in that overcrowded cafeteria and library and all.
Certainly. Thank you, thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you so much for being willing to serve the county.
In such a substantial way. I said, when I read your application, I thought, my goodness, if we get you on the school board, I think you're, you're practically a one-person gang. It comes with your husband here, the physicist.
Yes, yes.
Who has certainly volunteered considerably too and done some wonderful things, particularly at Hillsmere, I believe, as I recall.
Yes.
That the robotics program there, and...
We had, we had, you know, at least half as much fun as the kids, because it was a very rewarding experience.
I'm sure they loved it, and it was a wonderful experience for them.
They did, and, and just to see kids learning coding at an age when they're not afraid of it, and, and they learn to, you know, try something, fail, go back, try again, fail, redo. And so those, those skills of persistence and, and diving into, to hands-on, hands-on projects of the future was, was really...
We appreciate it. I know that the school did, too.
Thank you.
And of course, I was also, I said, there are many school grounds, playgrounds, that could use your assistance with schoolyard habit, habitats.
Yes, yes, well, we're hoping to hear...
With native plants, I can think of a couple that I've had experience with, that we tried that, so we would get perhaps some assistance with that, too.
And I'm, I'm happy to follow up with, with my day job with you and contact you later to see if I can assist them. I helped Riviera Beach Elementary School apply for a Chesapeake Bay Trust grant, they're waiting to hear within, within the end of this month or so, for a, for an outdoor classroom design that we're helping them with.
Well, a question, actually, I think I've heard a couple of things, questions that I had, but one is that you addressed the constraints on finances everywhere, and there are many things other than building, too, building and renovations that we need program-wise, but I wonder, how, have you any suggestions of how, you mentioned a tutorial program after school in your application. You know, they're costly, how, have you any ideas about things that maybe could be given up and replaced with this kind of thing? The tutorial after-school program?
Okay. Yeah, I think we need to take a fresh look at all programs, and, and one of the things I, you know, I don't feel that we need to be wedded to, to what we've done in the past, if it's, if it's not producing the results for us, and then I think we need to, to move forward with, with other things. You know, I think the, the IB program at the high school is, is very beneficial, and that provides things. I'm, I'm not as sure about the IB program at the elementary level, you know, I'm not as sure about teaching Italian to kids who live in a world with native Spanish speakers next to them. I know my son benefits greatly in his high school from being in Spanish class with mostly native Spanish speakers, more being on the soccer field. So it's tempting to, to dive into many different programs, but sometimes you need to reel back and, and focus on, on what you can really achieve well with, with your dollars. And even with our capital programs, how we construct our buildings, why, why do ours cost more than other counties in the way that we designed them? Are there other alternatives to getting more for our dollars in our construction planning?
Certainly, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi.
I'm Bill Jones. You know me a little bit, I'm representing the Teachers Association of Anaronda County. I won't be asking any questions tonight.
Okay.
But I don't want this to be of any offense to you, to Ms. Pets, or to Ms. O'Keefe. I know all three of you from board meetings, and we've had the opportunity to interview Ms. O'Keefe and Ms. Pets before. But a couple of my colleagues on the board, on this commission, outlined some objections to this process, and I think they were all right. I think we are doing exactly the wrong thing as a commission reaching into 19, to 2017, to 2018. the 2017, 2018 school year. I'm lending my voice to their objections and I'm not taking part in the questioning and I will not be voting yes for any of you. I know you all, a little bit at least, and I think all three of you would make fine, conscientious and thoughtful board members. Thank you for taking, thank you for participating.
Thank you, sir. I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Ms. Norman. I'm Bob Burden. I represent the business community. I want to express my appreciation for your desire to want to serve the students and the families of those who have students in our public school system. And I have no questions for you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Pam Bukowski, representing the Anarod County Council PTAs. Like to thank you for stepping forward to be part of the process. On behalf of our parents and students, I would like to thank you for your dedication and persistence, your advocacy work on behalf of our public school system. I mean, that certainly doesn't go unnoticed. I don't really have any questions either.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Again, in the interest of brevity and time, I came before you just a couple of months ago and gave you my long background, but again, I come before you today as a member of the community who has a longstanding background of volunteering, advocacy and my business and his, uh, what's the word? My growing up, my background of diversity, I believe, is still an asset to the school board and this community and I ask for your nomination to the governor. Thank you.
Thank you also for going through the process once again. I've had the pleasure of interviewing you four times and been very pleased each and every time. I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Ms. Pets. I'm Bob Burden. I represent the business community. Again, I wanna echo my appreciation for your desire to want to serve the students and the families who have students in Anarod County Public Schools.
Thank you.
And certainly for your desire to participate in this process again. I have no questions.
Thank you.
Hello.
I don't need to give my explanation all over again. I saw you sitting in the seats listening to me.
Yes.
No questions.
Thank you.
My name is Joanne Maynard and actually, in reading your resume, it was very complete. I see that you've done lots of volunteer work in the schools, particularly at the Arnold Elementary-
Yes.
On the design work of the school and so forth.
Yes.
And so I really have no more questions.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you? It's nice to see you. I wanted to thank you again for applying and also echo what Ms. Maynard has suggested with all of your efforts in your champion Arnold Elementary and quite frankly, all students.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have asked you many of the questions before, as we went through this before, but one of the things I wanted to talk to you about is in your application, you mentioned a study called Explaining Relationships Among Student Outcomes in Schools' Physical Environment. I was hoping you could elaborate on that a little bit and-
So there are lots of studies, obviously-
Yes.
On environment and even everything from the color of paint that you use in a classroom to, or any building for that matter, and how that affects people in their day-to-day environment. So I think just being cognizant of that and in our design for Arnold Elementary and working through that process with architects and the, you know, real people that do that every day, being conscientious of natural light and proper placement of things in the classroom all come into play, that it's not always just, you know, we didn't just go into this asking for a new building. We really wanted to make it, and, you know, for every child, everywhere, but those things are considered and do make a difference in academic achievement and work productivity as well.
I think it's wonderful. I, I, there's a study, and I'll send it over to you at some point, Greater School Council, who does it, and sort of a compilation of all of these sort of studies.
Yeah.
And it's very, very interesting, but I think so often that correlation is never made between the physical environment and academic outcomes and-
Yeah, we kind of, at Arnold, you know, we just got our blue ribbon, state blue ribbon. So they do, the students are doing extremely well in this very old kind of building, half-underground with no natural light. So I, long-term, my kids will never go to that school, am very interested to see if we can track testing and sort of if we can see that there is a difference in academic performance based on them being in a new environment. Obviously, it won't be the same kids, but just sort of seeing if there is any sort of correlation that we can track ourselves.
It absolutely has to do with the teacher in the classroom-
Yeah.
But there is sort of the other side of it as well-
Exactly.
Which I think always gets lost in, in the conversation. So thank you for highlighting that.
Sure. Thank you.
That's the only question I have.
Good evening.
Hi.
Apparently I don't know how to work the microphone.
It's all right.
I'm Kemp Hammond. We met at the March 14th meeting.
We have.
And I'm representing District 30. I don't have any other questions, given your extensive statement and questions at that meeting. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susannah Kipke. I'm from District 31 and I just wanted to thank you for coming out again. And of course, like everyone, I remember your interview very well from last time and I don't have any more questions. You were very thorough last time.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you? I'm Dr. Ferrara and I represent AEL, which you've known me before. First of all, I want to thank you for your courageous decision to, to do it again.
Yes.
Okay? I really do.
Thank you.
I, I think it's wonderful that you have this tenacity and perseverance.
Thank you.
I had asked my questions last time and I feel like I've reviewed your resume and your references, et cetera, so I have no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello. How are you?
My name is Chike Anyawu and I'm from District 21. I'm representing Cam Gass, who could not be here today, tonight. Well, since I don't know you real well, I'm not gonna be like every other person there. I'm gonna ask some questions.
That's okay.
Are you homeschooled? Are you any, are you by any chance a parent or homeschooler?
I am not a parent of a homeschooler. I have siblings that are 15 and 16 years younger than myself and at the time of living in New Jersey, we did homeschool my sister for one year during that.
Okay. How did, how did that go?
Um, it was great for her and my mom. I wasn't the parent. You know, I think at the time, it served a purpose for her. She was having some anxiety and going in, you know, again, it was sort of no particular reason, but my mom also had the capability of being a stay-at-home mom, so taking that on and that was, she's getting married this year. So that was at least 15 years ago at this point and the resources and things that were available back then are not what you have on the internet and programs where you can buy on the internet to do. So it was very homegrown. My mom speaks Spanish, so she taught six kids Spanish and another woman was a writer and she took those six kids and they wrote a book over the course of the year and everyone sort of pitched in and moved around. So that was just something, you know, that I had that opportunity to experience, but I went to public school and my children go to public school.
That's awesome. There is, now I'm asking you, my wife and I, parent or homeschool-
Yes.
You know, so it's very important for me, it's personal. My question then would be, currently, it appears that the County Board of Education, I don't believe are really helping homeschoolers. And if you think about it, as homeschoolers, parents, we're also taxpayers and we don't get any resources from, from the county government. Are you willing to work on that, to see that homeschoolers are offered, you know, minimal resources, you know, at least provide textbooks or whatever, you know, to, to assist them? Because we also, I believe, we're saving money for the county by homeschooling kids, you know, so what do you think?
I think that's something that I would have to research all sides of the coin. I'm not overly invested in knowing what the federal government regulations are. I'm sure that there are regulations on all different levels of where federal dollars can be spent within a school building versus sort of giving that outside of the school. So I would be happy to research and investigate and analyze that situation to see if there are ways to be supportive of that. I know, you know, there are different opportunities in different areas where those homeschool students can play on sports and in some areas, they can't play on sports teams and things like that. And again, I believe some of that is all related to the finances and insurance pieces of that puzzle. But researching that and coming up with, you know, what is best again for the whole of the community would be my strategy for that.
Thank you for your answer. I don't have your resume in front of me. I'm just representing Cam tonight, so I will not ask any further questions. So, thank you.
I can tell you, you voted for me last time.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Do you have anything else you want to add?
No, I appreciate, I know there's a lot of, you know, different things going on and I appreciate everyone taking the time to come forth and be a part of this commission. And, and you know, once again, I, my perseverance in being here is really about the community and the children. So, thank you.
All right. Okay. My name's Claudia O'Keefe. I've met most of you before. I said probably enough about myself, I think, at the previous meeting, if I could add. I come from a different background from a lot of people. My dad spent most of his childhood in France. My mom spoke Italian before she spoke English. She went to school in Sweden and Germany and kind of around the world a bit. And that's really a lot of what influenced me growing up. School was kind of my day job and when I went home, that was very much my life. And I, you know, a lot of what we did for recreation was go to the library because that was really exciting for me, I know, to go and check out books and take them home. And when we got older, we could afford to go to the bookstore and buy some of them. And I think one of the things that really sticks with me, and I put it in my application, is giving those, giving kids that love of learning. And I think you can only do so much during the school day, but if you can send them home with that motivation, that love of learning more, once they're out of school, that's what sticks with them. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. So how do you plan to, or how do you suggest that we impact that love of learning to our kids, you know, including ones that are not in public schools?
Including not in public schools.
Yeah, including the, the kids that are not in public schools.
Right.
You know, they're, you know, they're privately-
Right.
Thought, you know, maybe private schools or homeschoolers. How do you suggest that the county or your position will help them to accept that love of learning?
I, I think for students who aren't in public schools, it becomes difficult, but I think through partnerships with other organizations. I think certainly the private schools have their own method of motivating kids, but I, I think really through partnering with, with businesses and private organizations and I guess showing them. I think we have, the school system has events that are open to anyone in the community that are, I think most, one of the recent ones had to do with educating bright children, how to get, get them the resources they need, that sort of thing. So, so that sort of public outreach and, and, and community partnerships.
Thank you.
Ms. O'Keefe, it is nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
I think I have said that I was the principal of your children's school, so I know you at a different capacity and hope both of them are doing well. Please let them know I, my regards, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for applying again. Again, perseverance, tenacity. I reviewed your resume. I had the questions last time that you had interviewed for the position. So best of luck and don't forget to give those children a hug from me, okay?
I do.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susannah Kipke. Thank you for being here again. It's nice to see you. And I, I really, last time you were very thorough in your questions or in your answers, so I don't have any more questions for you tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Ms. O'Keefe. Kemp Hammond, representing District 30. I don't have any questions either after your testimony and questions that you answered at the last meeting.
Thanks.
It's almost like a broken record. Truly, thank you. Thank you for applying again and thank you for your tenacity and perseverance. I too have reread your application and reviewed the meeting from last time and really thank you for, for everything you did and your involvement in the community. And I have no questions.
Thanks.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Again, thank you. You're getting all kinds of thank yous tonight. I just can't help but notice throughout your application, the application of the typical engineer and problem-solving skills.
Thank you.
And that is readily apparent and I, that's a good thing. And your technology comments and so forth, that's something. And you also said something that I just think is a wonderful thing. Every student should graduate from high school with a plan.
Yes.
And you had some good examples of that. Would you care to elaborate on that at all or did you say-
Yes. Oh, yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot I could say about that. I think recently, I saw a map recently of all the homes in the county for sale and it had dots for every home and the blue dots were regular sales and the red dots were foreclosures. And about half the dots on that map were foreclosures. And a lot of that has to do with the economic downturn, but a lot of that has to do with people who got involved in loans that they couldn't afford. And I think if they had just a little more education about what they were getting into when they signed those mortgage papers, I think we would have a lot fewer people losing their homes right now. And, and it wouldn't take much effort on the school system's part to impart that kind of knowledge, what's involved in a rental agreement, what you're promising, what happens when you don't pay it, the same with a mortgage, what happens when you don't pay a mortgage? Because there, there's something that those people were signing into and agreeing to and it didn't work out the way they expected. And I think if they knew a little bit more about what was involved when they walked into it, and that's something a lot of parents can't impart, they're not really well-educated themselves on what the financial angle is, on how you pay for your house- I think recently, I saw a map recently of all the homes in the county for sale. And it had dots for every home, and the blue dots were regular sales, and the red dots were foreclosures. And about half the dots on that map were foreclosures. And a lot of that has to do with the economic downturn, but a lot of that has to do with people who got involved in loans that they couldn't afford. And I think if they had just a little more education about what they were getting into when they signed those mortgage papers, I think we would have a lot fewer people losing their homes right now. And, and it wouldn't take much effort on the school system's part to impart that kind of knowledge, what's involved in a rental agreement, what you're promising, what happens when you don't pay it, the same with a mortgage, what happens when you don't pay a mortgage? Because there's something that those people were signing into and agreeing to, and it didn't work out the way they expected. And I think if they knew a little bit more about what was involved when they walked into it, and that's something a lot of parents can't impart, they're not really well-educated themselves on what the financial angle is, on how you pay for your house, how you pay for a car, credit card debt, that sort of thing, it gets people caught a lot.
I think well said. If I'm not mistaken, some of what you're saying, that curriculum was abolished, as far as, in the school system, literally, decided was not a requirement. It was called home economics. Now, that might be an old term that's out of date and everything, but there were things that, just as you're describing, life skills.
Life skills, exactly. I completely agree.
That was, decided that it was obsolete, and maybe we need to rethink that in some other, maybe, updated form. But thank you. I enjoyed reading your application.
Thank you.
Ms. O'Keefe, thank you. Welcome. And I don't have any questions for all the comments I have already made.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. O'Keefe. I'm Bob Burden, representing the business community. Again, I want to express my appreciation for your desire to serve the children and the parents of the children that have students in Anarodou County Public Schools. I have no questions for you.
Good evening, Pam Bukowski, Anarodou County Council PTAs. I have no questions.
Thank you.
Since you didn't have a lot of questions, I might as well give you one more.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just a little disappointed because, not with you, but the system. You know, because we talk, the talk all the time about improving education in the minority communities. And I don't see that improvement. I don't see anything being done to us, to us there. You know, what do you think you, and having served before, you know, so what do you think is going on? Why are there no improvements in the minority community as far as education is concerned? And you mentioned the foreclosures, you know. So can you speak on that a little bit, please? Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think people aren't looking so much at the people who need help, they're looking at the numbers and the statistics. And that doesn't really give you a good picture of what's going on. I think there are students who need more resources, and they're not getting the resources they need. And I think it's not that difficult to find those kids and get them the rest, you know, there's financial need there to get them resources, maybe, but I think right now, you know, we know there are kids that need help. We know what their grades are, we know what their test scores are, we know they need help. And I agree, it's frustrating. Why are they not getting the help they need? Why are they being allowed to just fall through the system and not succeed? And if that means more teachers, there's a way to get them more teachers. If that means additional educational materials or additional help for those kids, I think we should be doing that. And I don't think we're doing that. And I think some of the stuff that's happening, where we're seeing a few improvements, I'm not sure we're actually seeing improvements in the actual students that need help. I think what we're seeing is maybe the numbers working out a little differently. I'm not sure that what we're getting right now is actual results for the kids, but I agree. I think we need to, I think it's not that hard to find out which kids need extra help. And once you've identified them, it's just getting them what they need. So. I mean, I, there's a lot I could say, and I don't want to waste your time. I think I put in the interview there, the kids, I got, there is one thing I'd like to add. I got a note when I got home the other day. My daughter wrote it. And I know they make these kids write these notes, so I'm under no illusions here. But the note basically said, and I should have brought it, because it's really inspiring for me, it said, "I'm so happy you signed me up for STEM. I really do like school most of the time, even though I complain, and thanks, Mom and Dad, for being so great and helping me out at school." I know they made her write that at school, I know. They wanted, they made all the kids write notes. But it means a lot to me. And one of the things they do in elementary school that I think is a huge success is they write these notes home to parents that say, "Your child was caught doing something good." And it says what they did good, and that's fantastic, because I would always show it to whichever kid got the note and say, "Look, you were caught doing something good. Isn't that fantastic?" And it helps me and it helps my kids to see that they're being recognized for something great. So there are a lot of things the school system is doing right, but certainly, I think there's a lot of room for improvement. But I think, you know, these little things, they're not multimillion-dollar programs, they're just simple things that we can do to recognize the kids and give them a little bit of inspiration. That's all. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public testimony. So do we have any members of the public that would like to come down? Okay. This light, this microphone that's lighted is, is already captured by the cameras for television, if you'd like to use this one, please. And when you come forward, just state name and address, if you would.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Robichaud, R-O-B-I-C-H-A-U-D. My address is 1100 Skyway Drive, Annapolis, Maryland, 21409. I think the schism in this commission is obvious, and I am very concerned that any nominee that is selected by this board will have an unfair shadow of illegitimacy cast upon them. And I think that does a huge disservice to these fine applicants that are before you. As a member of the public, I am very discouraged by the political infighting that this commission is embroiled in. I think it's hugely concerning, and it takes the impetus off what the important job of this commission is, which is helping to select the members of our school board that are there to guide the policies for our children's education.
Any other public comments? Okay. Seeing none, that'll close the public comments section. And the next item on the agenda is the nominations, are the nominations for District 21 and the at-large seats.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
Commissioner Jones?
I move that we make no nominations tonight for either District 21 or the at-large position.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
Okay. There's been a motion made and a second made, discussion?
I'd like to speak to my motion, please.
There are irregularities that were discussed last night. This commission never made the decision to open up for new applicants and new candidates. It was made by some member or members outside of the commission meeting. And then, when the Attorney General's opinion came out, giving the opinion that this was, would be an illegal process by virtue of sending up prospective nominees for vacancies that will not occur until July 1 of 2017, the decision was made again by some member or members of this commission to go forward in defiance of the Attorney General's office. This commission never made that decision. And when, what's going on right now is we have parties, members of this commission that are on two different sides of a legal battle. There is one side saying that the law that was passed and was scheduled to take effect on June 1 is unconstitutional, and there are those on the other side of the argument that say, that agree with the Attorney General's opinion, say that doing these prospective nominations would be illegal. Now, I know there was a favorable ruling made this afternoon saying that this commission can go forward, but just because it can doesn't mean it should. Those vacancies are still well over a year away. The dispute over whether it was constitutional or illegal to seat the new commissioners on June 1 will eventually be settled. Seems to me the most sensible thing for this commission to do is withhold nominations until we get the issue of legality and constitutionality settled for good, instead of rushing to action now.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Jones, if there were a different SBNC, you would be part of that, right?
I would be.
And would that commission be able to send forward names? For these seats?
Well, I can't answer that with a yes or no.
Would you not want to meet with that commission and send forward names, independent of what we do?
I cannot answer that question, yes or no. If this was called in conformance with our bylaws, my answer would be yes. But I don't think it was. The commission.
No, no, I'm asking about any prospective meetings that you would be able to participate in as a future member of a future commission, which has not yet come to be. Would you have the opportunity to put forward more names? As a person, would you, as a commissioner, be able to meet?
You mean if I was on the new, are you asking me if I was on the commission that was supposed to be seated after June 1?
Well, we don't know what it was supposed to be, but the commission, the hypothetical commission that we're talking about.
I would be, I would be a part of the SBNC.
And you would be able to put forward more names?
And I would be able to put forward a name on, either way, because I'm going to be a commissioner, either way.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to follow up on your question, and I, if I understood your question correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the point you're trying to make is even if names went up under this commission, if a new commission was seated, that commission would also be able to submit names for the same seats. Is that what you're driving at, Mr. Chairman?
Actually, I think I asked if Commissioner Jones would be willing to do that if he were going to continue on a, on a future commission, but that's.
Well, I, well, I don't think there's any doubt that if the ruling of the court was to uphold the recent law that was passed by the General Assembly, that any new commission that was seated could possibly entertain opening up applications and reviewing candidates for these very same seats and submit them also to the governor. And that likelihood could possibly exist, we don't know yet. But under what we're doing today, if such were the case, Mr. Chairman, then these candidates, as was noted in the public testimony just a few moments ago, would be under the shadow of a cloud in terms of the legitimacy of what this particular commission is doing now, for the reasons that Commissioner Jones mentioned, in support of his motion to not go forward to the nominations until the legal matters have been addressed and have been settled. And so I think that Commissioner Jones is very right in making his motion, and I, as a representative of the business community, support his motion for those reasons.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
I have it, yeah. I don't know. Probably not, I don't know. Okay. Sure. Of course.
Commissioner Jones, may I ask, I am so sorry, did I miss this Attorney General's opinion that you keep referring to, or was it distributed among us? Is it, is there some reason that I should have seen it, and it's my mistake that I haven't seen it yet? Or was it issued and we weren't? But my question is, is there a reason that I haven't seen it? Is it my mistake or my oversight? Well, but that's, my question isn't what does it contain? My question is, is it my oversight that I haven't seen it? Or?
I don't know if it's my oversight, I don't know why you haven't seen it.
Okay, all right.
How could I answer a question about whether or not?
Well, I, I would have really appreciated. I like to be prepared, I like to read ahead. I would have loved to know that this was going to come up and have an opportunity to read it and review it and understand the arguments before we have to vote on something that's very serious.
That's exactly the reason why the commission should have met and made this decision as a commission, so we all had the same playbook. It didn't happen.
Well, if that's your goal, then, excuse me, if, if that is your goal, it would have been nice to be extended the courtesy that you're asking for, but, okay, thank you.
I'm not the chair.
Commissioner Jones, I think the point you just made was what we discussed last night about, about the holding of the hearing, and the commission's already voted on that last night.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. I have a question for the chair. Have the candidates that met with the commission yesterday and the candidates that are meeting with us this evening, have you conveyed to them the legal challenges that are currently before the courts, as well as the Attorney General's opinion that was issued on April 26 of this particular year, questioning the legality of what this commission is undertaking in yesterday's proceedings and today's proceedings? And furthermore, have these candidates had the opportunity to read the Attorney General's opinion that was issued? You know, this, you know, this commission is operating under Maryland state law, and the Attorney General for the state of Maryland has rendered opinion as to the validity of the validity of the proceedings that have taken place yesterday and today. And so my question to you is, have the candidates had the opportunity to review that opinion? Have you made them aware of it?
Commissioner Jones, I apologize. I have seen this, this is old. I thought there was a new suggestion that had come out that you were referring to, but I, this is an old recommendation, and I have seen it. Thank you.
To answer your question, as Commissioner, well, I did not forward any legal opinions or lawsuits or anything like that to the candidates, anything different than I had to any of the previous hearings that we've had or processes we've gone through. And as Commissioner Jones said, I can't know what other people have had access to or read. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Do you have, you want, can you help me with the question?
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, there may be other people with public testimony that just came in.
We've already closed public testimony. Do you have a question or order, Commissioner Hammon? Yes. Motion by Commissioner Jones to make no motions for nomination for either the District 21 seat or the at-large seat.
Tonight.
This evening. So the question is, to make no motions for the nominations for the District 21 seat or the at-large seat this evening?
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I simplify that a little bit? My motion was not to make no motion. My motion was to make no nominations.
No nomin, oh, sorry, no nominations. To make no nominations for the District 21 seat or the at-large seat this evening. Okay. Commissioner Brannenberg?
Thank you. Sometimes with the double negatives, I just want to make sure that I'm voting the right way. I will absolutely be voting to make nominations for both District 21 and at-large. So I guess I'm voting.
That's a no.
Is that a no? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Bukowski? Commissioner Burden? Commissioner Dixie Proctor is absent. Commissioner Farrar?
Yes.
And in place of Commissioner Gast, GK, I'm sorry.
Just to make sure I understand.
Just to make sure I understand. Just to make sure I understand, you know, what we're voting on. When you say yes, it means we're not nominating tonight?
Correct. A yea would be not to nominate tonight.
I'm a vote, I'm a, I'm a vote no. That means I want us to nominate tonight.
Correct. Okay. Commissioner Hammond.
Nay.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Kipki.
No.
Okay. Commissioner Maynard.
No. If I say no, that's.
No means we proceed. Yes. We went through a very similar function exercise last night. Okay. All right. All right. I'm seeing already, am I right here? One, two, three, four, five. I'm seeing five nos, right? Is that what you have?
Yes.
So the motion has failed. Okay. Going back to the agenda, the nominations, we'll start in the, we'll go through the votes for nominations in the same order that they were randomly selected by Mathematica.
Mr. Chairman, do we have a motion on the floor to act on?
We're about to. I'm just explaining the question. So these were selected by Mathematica. We're going to go in the same order as the interviews were. And there will be two votes for two of the applicants who are seeking both the at-large seats and, or the at-large seat and the District 21 seat. So the first question. The SBNC nominates Stacy Korblech to represent District 21 on the Anaronda County Board of Education. Commissioner Brannenberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Abstain.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, point of order. If that's a motion, it hasn't been seconded yet.
Then I second.
Okay. Commissioner Brannenberg, is your vote still yes?
Yes.
Commissioner Bukowski, you still abstain?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Burden.
Commissioner Burden abstains.
Okay. Commissioner Farrar.
I abstain.
For Commissioner Gast. GK.
Yes.
Okay. Were you going to say something? Okay. Oh, Commissioner Hammond.
Yea.
You're ready to go. Commissioner Jones.
Abstain.
Commissioner Kipki.
Yes.
Commissioner Maynard.
Yes.
Okay. The motion carries. The SBNC will nominate Stacy Korblech to represent District 21 on their Anaronda County Board of Education. Okay. This second question. The SBNC nominates Stacy Korblech to represent Anaronda County at-large on the Anaronda County Board of Education.
I second.
Okay. Just for the record, I watched the, Commissioner Burden, I watched the most recent votes of the previous commission and there was no motion or second. There was no question at all, just a reading of a name and a vote, which you participated in. Commissioner Brannenberg.
Yes.
This is Korblech, Anaronda County at-large. Commissioner Bukowski.
Abstain.
Commissioner Burden.
Commissioner Burden abstains.
Commissioner Farrar.
I abstain.
Commissioner Gast.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond.
Yea. Yes. Sorry.
Commissioner Jones.
Abstain.
Commissioner Kipki.
Yes.
Commissioner Maynard.
Yes.
That's five yays. So the motion carries. The SBNC will nominate Stacy Korblech to represent Anaronda County at-large on the Anaronda County Board of Education. Okay. Next question. The SBNC nominates Tracy Parker-Warrant to represent District 21 on the Anaronda County Board of Education.
I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner, have it. Commissioner Brannenberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Abstain.
Commissioner Burden.
Commissioner Burden abstains.
Okay. Commissioner Farrar.
I abstain.
And for Commissioner Gast.
Abstain. I don't know.
Okay. Commissioner Hammond.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Abstain.
Commissioner Kipki.
Yes.
Commissioner Maynard.
Yes.
And the chairman will vote yes. So the motion carries. And the SBNC will nominate Tracy Parker-Warrant to represent District 21 on the Anaronda County Board of Education. Next question. The SBNC nominates Tracy Parker-Warrant to represent Anaronda County at-large on the Anaronda County Board of Education. Commissioner Brannenberg. Scissor, a second.
I'll second. Yes.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Abstain.
Okay. Commissioner Burden.
Commissioner Burden abstains.
Commissioner, she's absent. Commissioner Farrar.
I abstain.
For Commissioner Gast. Okay. Commissioner Hammond.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Abstain.
Commissioner Kipki.
Yes.
Commissioner Maynard.
Yes.
And the chairman will vote yes. The motion will carry. The SBNC nominates Tracy Parker-Warrant to represent Anaronda County at-large on the Anaronda County Board of Education. The next question. The SBNC nominates Sandy Smallnicki to represent Anaronda County at-large on the Anaronda County Board of Education.
I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner Brannenberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Abstain.
Commissioner Burden.
Commissioner Burden abstains.
Commissioner Farrar.
I abstain.
Commissioner Gast.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Abstain.
Commissioner Kipki.
Yes.
Commissioner Maynard.
No.
And the motion, okay, the chairman will vote yes. The motion carries. Sandy Smallnicki will be nominated to represent the Anaronda County, Anaronda County at-large on the Anaronda County Board of Education. To one no. Five. Got it. Okay. Next question. The SBNC nominates Janet Norman to represent Anaronda County at-large on the Anaronda County Board of Education.
I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner Brannenberg.
No.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Abstain.
Commissioner Burden.
Commissioner Burden abstains.
Commissioner Farrar.
I abstain.
Commissioner Gast.
Yes.
For Commissioner Gast. Commissioner Hammond.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Abstain.
Commissioner Kipki.
Yes.
Commissioner Maynard.
Yes.
Okay. That's sufficient. The motion carries. The SBNC will nominate Janet Norman to represent Anaronda County at-large on the Anaronda County Board of Education. Okay. Next question. The SBNC nominates Carrie Pettz to represent Anaronda County at-large on the Anaronda County Board of Education.
I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner Brannenberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Abstain.
Commissioner Burden.
Commissioner Burden abstains.
Commissioner Farrar.
I abstain.
For Commissioner Gast.
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Abstain.
Commissioner Kipki.
Yes.
Commissioner Maynard.
Yes.
And the motion carries. The SBNC will nominate Carrie Pettz to represent Anaronda County at-large on the Anaronda County Board of Education. Next question. The SBNC nominates Claudia O'Keefe to represent Anaronda County at-large on the Anaronda County Board of Education.
I'll second.
Okay. Mix it up. Okay. Commissioner Brannenberg.
No.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Abstain.
Commissioner Burden.
Commissioner Burden abstains.
Commissioner Farrar.
I abstain.
For Commissioner Gast.
Yes.
Commissioner Hammond.
No.
Commissioner Jones.
Abstain.
Commissioner Kipki.
Yes.
Commissioner Maynard.
Yes.
The motion, that's three, two. The motion carries. The SBNC nominates Claudia O'Keefe to represent Anaronda County at-large on the Anaronda County Board of Education. If I'm not mistaken, that's, that's it. Okay. That concludes the nominations for District 21 and the at-large seat.
Mr. Chairman, could we walk through candidates so we can all get an accurate vote count before we part company tonight?
Before we part company tonight? Yes. Next on the agenda is new business. Is there any new business? Okay. Seeing none, the next item on the agenda is to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So not.
Second.
Second.
Is there any opposition to adjourning? In that case, by unanimous consent, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, you're welcome to look over my scratches here. Oh, here's one more.
Did you guys make the motion? She's second. Is that four?
Yeah, I guess you'd say.[1797.34]